So I have, it looks like we are at 6 o'clock, is that correct?
It's correct, you're live.
Correct, Bob. Okay, so, um, we normally get a countdown, we'll work out, it sounds like we might have somebody new in the background this evening, so that's fine, my name is Robert Tatro. As a preliminary matter, as the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals, before I begin the meeting, in an effort to reduce background noise, I'm going to ask that you all please mute your phones at this time, and only unmute if you're going to speak, that's referring to everybody who calls in.
Unmuted.
Permit me to confirm that all members in person participating on the agenda are here and can hear me right now, so when I call the membership roll call, could I get an affirmative, please? Vice Chair Michael Maron, present?
Present, affirmative.
Uh, Mr. Chacolo. Mr. Chacolo, are you present?
I don't see him on, Bob.
Okay, we can come back if he does call in. Mr. Cussie, are you present, sir, and can hear us?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
Affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bush?
I'm here.
Okay, and then we'll check for any town officials, if you are present, please say so. Building Commissioner Caleb Moody?
Here.
GDIS Building Clerk Katrina Smalls?
Present.
Do I have anyone else from the town side that I have not identified this evening that might be here in the meeting and you'd like to ID yourself?
Hi, this is Eilish Corey, I'm the Senior Civil Engineer for the Department of Public Works, and I am here to give a presentation tonight.
Great, thank you so much for introducing yourself, we'll try to get to the hearings as efficiently as possible, I see that you're on the agenda, and then when we get to you, we will certainly turn the floor over to you, so welcome and thank you for being here. So, let me go ahead and read through my script as quickly as possible, and then we'll get to opening this meeting and we'll get to business. So with that, everyone being present, and that we acknowledge to everyone here, so good evening, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals of Thursday, April 15, 2021, now called a order at 6:00 PM, this meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of the emergency in Caldwell, Massachusetts, due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we have been advised and directed by the Caldwell to suspend public gatherings, and as selects the Governor's order to suspend the requirement of the open meeting law to have all public and publicly accessible physical location, further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, to which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals, henceforth known as the ZBA, is convening by remote participation for the public only, although some staff may be physically located in the selectmen's meeting room of the Town Hall, the town employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, please call 1-646-749-3112, and then you're going to enter the access code 944-571-349, or the public can join via computer at GoToMeeting.com, click on the upper right tab where it says "Join", enter the meeting number 944-571-349. The remote access information has been posted also on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, employees, and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer, anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials have been provided to the member of the body and are available on the town's website, the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business grounds, we are all turning to the first item on the agenda, before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules, for effective and clear conduct of our business, and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Robert Tatro, will introduce each speaker on the agenda, after they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name, provide any comments, questions, or motions, please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you, and then state your name before speaking. If a member wishes to engage in discussion with other members, please remember to do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself first. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments and follow them. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak, identify their names and addresses only, once the Chair has listed all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes to comment. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Technical difficulties, if we have any technical difficulties, we will suspend the meeting while attempts be made to resolve the issue, we will keep accurate, noting any disconnections, reconnections of members. Okay, so moving on to my next handout here. So again, welcome to the Thursday, April 15, 2021, 6 o'clock PM, remote meeting participation of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Vice Chair Michael Maron makes a motion to open, do I have a second?
Yeah, Rich Cussie, second.
Thank you, Mr. Cussie. Megan Roach, how do you vote?
I approve the motion to open.
Peter Jones, how do you vote? Caitlin Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
I also, Chair Robert Tatro, approve, just to check before we proceed again, do we have Mr. Chacolo joining the meeting yet?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Caleb?
Just for clarification, you also need to call on the person that made the motion and the person that made the second for the vote.
Okay, I will do that, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Have identified Mr. Chacolo being present?
No, I don't see Larry signed on yet.
Okay, so as making the motion, Vice Chair, how do you vote?
Um, I approve, and Mr. Chairman, if I may, that I have the floor for a second.
Go ahead.
Uh, just for housekeeping items, and I'm sure you have this on your list, but given that Mr. Chacolo is not present, perhaps we can bring one of our alternates forward formally to vote this evening.
Absolutely, sir, I was trying to move these along on my list as quickly as possible, but I do appreciate that. So now that Mr. Chacolo is not present, let me finish this vote and we'll move on to that. So we got an affirmative vote from the Vice Chair, Mr. Cussie, how do you vote, has a second on the vote?
I approve.
Okay, so we have an open meeting, so the next one we have for the general purpose of the meeting is that we have alternate, Peter Jones will be stepping forward as a full member this evening for voting purposes, as Mr. Chacolo is apparently not present. So with that being said, um, have I missed any, before we proceed, I did want to make sure, because I know that it's certainly possible that I have, but I believe that I've covered everything to the point that we needed to so far that I can open this 6:00 PM hearing. Is there anyone private who would disagree with that? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Do I have a motion to open the 6:00 PM applicant Gaetano and Mariangeli Barone, and I apologize if I mispronounced any of that, requesting a variance under section 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build a garage 10 foot 9 inches from the front property line, on property located at 32 Silver Street, Auburn, Mass., map 9 parcel 30, and before I open the hearing, a request for an open the hearing, I just want to make sure that you are aware that there is a possibility of these applications tonight could be considered either special permits or variances, that was brought to my attention today, so we're going to vet those possibilities as well, so as long as the members have that in the back of their head, while they're thinking of all the other things going on, it might help move things along. So, do I have a motion with all that being said to open the 6:00 PM hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to open the hearing as stated.
Thank you very much, do I have a second?
Yeah, Rich Cussie, second.
Okay, so Mr. Vice Chair Maron, to take the roll call vote, do you vote to open the hearing?
Yes, approve.
Mr. Cussie, do you vote to open the hearing?
Approve.
Megan Roach, do you vote to open the hearing?
Approve.
Peter Jones, do you make a vote to open the hearing, excuse me? And myself, Robert Tatro, Chair, I also approve. Okay, so we have an open hearing.
Yeah.
Applicants present this evening?
Yes, we are.
Okay, ma'am, my name is Robert Tatro, I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board, and I'm sure everyone attending so far is anxiously awaiting a break from listening to me, so I'm going to turn the floor over to you, and what I'd like you to do is present using either the, you know, the town provided visuals at your disposal, or to the best of your ability to describe what you're trying to do, please, and I yield the floor to you.
Good evening, my name is Gaetano Barone, we both live in 32 Silver Street, we'd like a variance so we can build a two-car garage with a bonus room upstairs, it's going to be unfinished, no bathroom, it's not going to be an apartment, it's just going to be a big room, just for us, we'd like a two-car garage, being that there's no off-street parking over here, it'll be nicer for the neighborhood as far as beautifying the neighborhood, as well as keeping our family safe, we do have a little one that tends to run into the street sometimes when we're unloading our vehicles from taking groceries out of our vehicles and things of that nature, so for a safer measure, we'd like to ask for a variance to build on our lot, two-car garage, so that our family could be a little bit safer. We've done our due diligence as far as getting the land surveyed and provided by the town rule, and we're hoping to just get this variance so we can go ahead and build on the lot.
Okay, um, do I have any Butters present that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm going to call one more time, do I have any Butters present that want to speak on the 6:00 PM hearing that we have currently open? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, five, four, three, two, one. Vice Chair Maron, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir, if you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
Through the Chair, through the Chair, sorry, Ms. Maron, I don't mean to interrupt, I just.
That's all right.
If I could make a quick statement prior to the board making their comments, just so they understand what we're looking at. I had completed a zoning determination previously for the applicant and directed them towards a variance application. I have since learned that there's an accept clause in Chapter 40A for single and two-family homes. Basically, and this clause would apply to both applications tonight, although they're different applications, they're both existing non-conforming homes where they're adding on to the non-conforming home. Basically, both existing non-conforming structures that don't meet setbacks for the lots. And what I found in Chapter 40A is the Zoning Board of Appeals has the ability to, through the special permit process, approve additions to single and two-family homes, provided that the board finds that the proposed change is not more detrimental than the existing non-conformity. So I would ask that the board make a motion to change the application on the floor from a variance to a special permit, prior to considering.
Ma'am, now, but it's still not working right.
We didn't mess them across the street.
Hi, hold on, somebody's either just joined the meeting or just hit a microphone and started a conversation on the side, can you check out microphones, please?
I signed on with no audio, so it's not me.
Yeah, that is you, whoever that just said that. Okay, Caleb, so going back to that, now I just want to make sure that we're all clear on the microphone end of it. So can you just briefly explain that, I appreciate you taking the time to come out in front of the full hearing, I think it would be easier to clarify it now. So the current one that we have in front of us, would you prefer this to be listed as a variance or a special permit?
So I believe both applications tonight would be special permits under section 8.2.3.
Okay, so with that being said, do you want us, I think procedurally here, proceed with a vote to amend the application before we move forward then, would you agree?
I would agree that for this application, you would be looking for a motion to amend the application to a special permit under section 8.3.2 of the zoning bylaw.
And I think we should do it at the beginning of each hearing to make sure that they all each stand on their own, would you agree?
Correct.
Okay, so what I'd like to do then.
May I interrupt you just for a moment, please, sir, and I'm sorry, but before we do that, procedurally, can I just ask a question of the Building Commissioner?
You most certainly can, I yield the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, sir, aligned with that, so Caleb, are there, I had an opportunity to view this property distinctly, and so I have my own thoughts on variance, is there a distinct advantage either for the applicant or from the town's perspective, does this move to a special permit?
Through the Chair, Mr. Maron, for the variance application, the applicant would need to prove the mandatory findings required for a variance, where the burden of proof is much less for the special permit, and all they really need to prove, or all that the ZBA needs to find is that the proposed alteration would not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity. So I think it's definitely to the advantage of the applicant to go with the special permit, and the reason they applied for the variance was strictly because I directed them in that direction, and I was wrong in that direction.
Okay, and not looking to highlight that point of the topic, but only merely just that, my assumption was, is that it was not as steep of a climb to attain a special permit on the part of the applicant, and so it would be an easier path, or, okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman, that satisfies my question for the Commissioner.
Okay, and so before I proceed, actually, are there any other members of the board that have any other questions to the Building Commissioner? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I'll proceed then, so do I have a motion on the floor to amend the current application from variance to special permit as stated by the Building Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, as stated.
Okay, so I have a.
I'll second.
Motion as stated, do I have a second?
I will second, Megan Roach.
Thank you, Ms. Roach, so we will go back to the full roll call vote again, Vice Chair, how do you vote?
I approve.
Okay, Megan Roach, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussie, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I, the Chair, vote to approve. Okay, so we have amended the application from variance to special permit at the recommendation of the Building Commissioner. So we have also heard from the applicants regarding what they want to accomplish on their property, and we have also verified that there are no, at least at the time, there were no Butters present that wanted to speak. So with that being said, I'm going to try to pick up where we left off, and move to the Vice Chair, Mr. Maron, and find out if he has any questions or concerns from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the applicant, thank you for being here tonight. With the drawings that we have in front of us, just for the record, I want to confirm a couple of topics. So the intent is to remove the current detached garage that is on the property, and reconstruct adding a breezeway and connected two-car garage, is that correct?
That is correct, sir. This is Gaetano.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead, sir.
No, this is Gaetano Barone, I'm introducing myself again, that is correct, exactly what you stated.
Okay, and the relief, this being, given that it's currently a non-conforming use based on setbacks, the relief is that 10-foot 9 corner, that's indicated on the drawing as well, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further, as I stated, I did have an opportunity to view the property, and I think I well understand what they're trying to accomplish, I'm going to reserve any additional questions at this time, thank you, Chairman.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. Cussie, do you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
I had a chance to view the property today also, and I'm good with it, so I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roach?
Nope, I am also good with it.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, could you just, I just want to clarify, it was kind of a quick one for me.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bush, do you happen to have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
Nope, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, great, and honestly, I don't either, personally, again, I agree with the property as well, and I think I can share with the other members that I think it's a nice improvement as the applicant stated, and it does certainly make sense, I think it's a very nice vision improvement as well. So anyway, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Thank you.
Through the Chair, if I may.
Oh, you may, yes, please.
Did you want to check with the Butters just one more time, just to be sure?
Sure.
Thank you.
Per request, do we have any Butters who have joined the meeting before I proceed? Second call for Butters, if you have any Butters present that would like to speak regarding the 6:00 PM hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to proceed, so again, we have a motion, a second, we'll go through the roll call vote, Vice Chair Maron, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussie, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote? And I, myself, as the Chair, vote to approve. Okay, so that was for closing the public portion of the hearing, now let's move forward and determine if we have a motion for the 6:00 PM application, as it's been amended, as it is currently being submitted to the board, to approve, disapprove, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Michael Maron, I'd like to make a motion to approve with standard conditions as amended as a special permit.
Thank you very much, do I have a second?
Yeah, Rich Cussie, second.
Thank you very much, okay, so I'll do the roll call again, so Vice Chair Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cussie, how do you vote?
I approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
And myself, as the Chair, Robert Tatro, I approve, congratulations, good luck, you can be in contact with Caleb at Town Hall, or wherever it might be, and you'll be in to proceed with your project.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate it, our family appreciates it, and thanks you very much.
All right.
One question, Mr. Maron, may I get in contact with you via email as far as welcoming you through the special permit for the project?
To Caleb?
I have Caleb and Mr. Maron.
So, yeah, you could probably contact Caleb at the Town Hall. Caleb, are you still with us there, you wanted to describe that to him?
Yeah, if you want to just contact the Town Hall tomorrow, we can let you know what the next steps are going to be.
I most definitely will do that, my point of contact was Ginger, she was extremely helpful to me, is that the same number I'll be calling?
Yes, Ginger's in my office, so that would work.
Okay, excellent, well, thank you very much, I really appreciate it, wonderful evening.
Okay, we're going to give them about a minute or so, maybe just about a minute, and then we'll move on to the next one here. Okay. All right, it seems like we've settled down, so we have, next on our agenda is the 6:05 PM applicant Jason Shalinski requesting a special permit under section 8.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build in addition to a pre-existing non-performing lot on property located at 770 Oxford Street South, Auburn, Mass., map 74 parcel 60. Do I have a motion, so first what we're going to do is do a motion to open the hearing, and then I'm going to defer to Caleb, Caleb will go over and explain everything again with this particular permit, then we'll make a motion to amend or not amend, whatever the four teams fit, and then it will proceed as accordingly. So right now, I'm looking for a 65 applicant, I've already read, at 770 Oxford Street, South Auburn, Mass., map 74 parcel 60, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael, may I make a motion to open the hearing?
Thank you, do I have a second?
Rich Cussie, second.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
Approve the motion to open.
Thank you, Mr. Jones? Vice Chair Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Richard Cussie, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve, the meeting, the hearing is open, so I am going to defer to Caleb for the next minute or two, and he's going to go over everything again, and then we'll decide how we're going to proceed. Caleb, I give the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so this one, just a little change on this one, the applicant applied for special permit under section 8.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming lot, so they're looking, what we need to change is, this would be in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure, also on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. So just, I think just having that in the minutes, and having it recorded, I think the application is fine, it's still going to be under the same section, so I think the board can move forward. The issue with the, the only issue with the lot is the land area, structure is non-conforming because it does not meet the setbacks of the parcel.
Okay, so just quickly summarize for a purpose of a motion, would it amend this application from special permit?
No, this application is fine, as stated, it's going to be a special permit under section 8.3.2, the only, the only change is there's a little clerical miscue on the agenda, it is a non-conforming lot, but the addition is going to be to the non-conforming structure.
Oh, I see, okay, so rather than a non-conforming lot, non-conforming structure, so do we really need a vote for clarification, or should we just enter that into the record?
I think we're good to proceed, I don't think you need a vote.
Yeah, I agree, I think that just has to be annotated in the record, and I think we can continue to move forward. All right, so we have a motion to open the hearing, we've talked about the inconsistencies in the application, so now do I have a Mr. Jason Shalinski in the audience this evening? Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're here.
Hi, okay, so my name is Robert Tatro, I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board, I'm going to yield the floor to you, if you could introduce yourselves before you speak, and give the board an overview of what you're trying to accomplish, please, go ahead.
This is Jason Shalinski, contractor doing the work, we're basically going to be removing in the picture that you have on screen now, we're going to be removing the sunroom, which is currently off the side of the home on the shed side, and replacing it with a new, larger family room.
All right, can you talk about the dimensions for us?
The, I don't know if you have the proposed there, on the other plan, the other site plan, it has the dimensions on it, the new dimensions are 24 and a half by 20.2. The new dimensions are 24 and a half by 20.2. It's slightly larger, it's the same length out, it's slightly deeper front to back.
Okay. Before, do you have anything else you want to add before I yield the floor to any butters that may be present? Or is there anybody who wants to add to that? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, do I have any of butters present that would like to speak on the matter of the 6:05 hearing? All right, a second on the butters. Okay, five, four, three, two, one, I have no second on the butters. Vice Chair Maron, sir, if you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and so to the applicant, and I did have an opportunity to view the property. So, as I see it now, this, on the right-hand side, the current sunroom, that's the footprint, although as you described, slightly larger, that's the footprint. To the right, further right of that, there's a tree line, so it's not going into that area on the other side, it's actually replacing the sunroom, is that correct?
Correct. We're trying, we may have to, just for work, take down a couple of those, but we're trying to maintain all of those.
Okay. All right, when I originally viewed the property, and I misunderstood that it was replacing of the sunroom, I thought that it might have been going on the other side of it, and thereby going into that space where that tree line is.
No, it's replacing it. Yeah, no, we're just, we're basically taking that down, putting a full foundation on it, and replacing it depth-wise, as is.
Okay. And as far as the frontage, and I've got the diagram that you referenced earlier with the dimension, so where the frontage setback is a 32.4, this will be a 33, so just a foot out, 33.3, jog out. With that footprint.
Yeah, we were trying to stay behind that original bump, so we didn't do any worse with the nonconformity.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Chairman, I'm going to reserve any additional questions, but I don't have anything further at this time.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Cussy.
Yeah, I had a chance to view it today also, and it looks good, I'm good with it.
Thank you so much. This is Ms. Roach.
Yeah, I would agree. I also, starting like Mr. Maron at first, I thought it may be in addition to, but now that it's been clarified, I don't have any additional questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Just for clarification, we're looking at this as a special permit application, right?
That is correct. The intent and purpose of the permit did not change, it was just being worded as, where you could actually see it on the screen for the agenda, to build in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and it should have said to build in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. So the only change was the editing of the word "lot" out, and the inserting of the word "structure" in.
Thank you. Following the standard set forth in 48, section 6, I have no questions.
Okay, great, thank you. So while I'm at it, Ms. Bush, do you have any questions, concerns?
I don't have anything.
Thank you so much. I actually don't either, so do I have a motion, one more chance, do I have any of butters who might be present, or signed in? Okay, no butters, hearing none, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, Rich Cussy, second.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
Motion to close approved.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones approves, and I, the Chair, Robert Tejero, approve. Vice Chair Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
And Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Okay, so, do I have a motion on the 6:05 PM application as stated and amended for 770 Oxford Street South, Auburn Mass., map 74 parcel 60?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to approve with standard conditions as amended by the Building Commissioner as stated.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Rich Cussy, second.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I would approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
Thank you, and I, the Chair, Robert Tejero, vote to approve. So to the applicant, I think the same, you heard from the previous hearing, that you can contact the Building Services Department tomorrow at some time during the day, and they can let you know what the next steps are in your application process.
Did you get all the votes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, have a great evening. Okay, so, I think that's really all we have for people present left as far as hearings go, so we're going to move on to other cases. We have 26 Alba Street and 109 Tenka Hill Road, they're requesting a modification, and allow me to go get work here.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is present.
Oh, okay, excellent. If the applicant or the request for qualification is present, you could introduce yourself and address the board for what the concerns are.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Clay Williams with Eastland Partners. It's been some time since we last spoke in November concerning this project, but we submitted a letter in the middle of last week requesting two insubstantial changes to our comprehensive permit. It's listed on, yeah, that's the document right there for whoever's on the computer, ended up getting the wrong title. But the, number one, our first modification is that we are requesting a transfer of the comprehensive permit from Eastland Partners Incorporated to the Reserve LLC. It's simply just an administrative thing for ownership of the project and the permit. And the second modification is a minor change in the layout of eight units within the community. There will be no changes to any of the outsides of the buildings, to the parking ratios, all that we are doing is making eight one-bedroom units into two-bedroom units.
So, I was just going to go around the board and find out, any of the members have any concerns or questions? Vice Chair Maron, sir, do you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on the second change that you had mentioned, relative to moving from a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom for eight units, does that change the footprint in any way of what you're constructing?
No, it does not. If you look at the plan that's on the screen right now, all we're doing is basically building one wall inside of this existing layout, and a small closet in order for it to qualify as a bedroom. But it will be, you know, unnoticedable from the outside of the building, and you won't even be able to tell.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Cussy?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
No questions, I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Done, back.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
I'm all set, thanks.
Thank you. And myself, as the chair, I'm all set as well. So, do I have, we didn't really open a hearing, Caleb, for this. I know we should do a roll call, but do we need to kind of, we open a hearing for this then, if it's going to be a vote, it doesn't really have an impact on the project, it's just creative changes, but...
Through the chair. So procedurally, the board would need to take a vote, if they so choose, they would need to take a vote determining that the proposed changes are insubstantial, and do not require public hearing, and then they would need to take a vote to either approve or deny the changes.
Okay, so, members of the board, you heard the procedural path forward here, so I would make the, let me see how I want to say, I want to word this properly here, so, Mr. Maron, Vice Chair, do you consider the proposed changes inconsequential to the permit and only requiring administrative motions on the motion?
I would make such a motion that states that, succinctly, that the changes that are being proposed are minor changes and inconsequential, administrative in nature.
Okay. Mr. Cussy?
I agree.
Ms. Roach?
Through the chair, we need a second on that motion.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. Do I have a second motion?
Rich Cussy, second.
I'll second.
And I have, okay, so I have a second from Mr. Cussy, and a second from Ms. Roach, just to be clear on that, so we'll do a whole vote again. Vice Chair, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I, myself, the chair, vote to approve as well.
Through the chair, now we would need to, we would need a motion to approve or deny the changes as submitted.
Okay, so now that we have a second motion requirement, do I have a second motion as stated by the Building Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to approve as stated.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yeah, Rich Cussy, second.
Thank you, Mr. Cussy. Ms. Roach?
I would approve.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Approve.
I approve also. Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
And Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Excellent, okay, so that's been taken care of on both of those motions, so I think we've, we've taken care of that other business, part one. Caleb, any other things administratively around that application process that we should be aware of?
No, I think we're covered on that one, Mr. Chairman, we'll just move on to the presentation by Elise Corey.
Excellent. Elise, are you still with us? Ms. Corey, are you still with us?
I am.
Thank you very much for being patient.
Can you hear me?
Hello?
Okay. Caleb, would you mind sharing, oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. I was going to yield the floor to you if you were.
Okay.
Just wanted to say welcome, and thank you for being here, and I'm looking forward to taking a break from talking, and I'm sure all the other members are as well from hearing me, so I'm going to yield the floor, and please explain what you have going on for us tonight.
Sure, great, all right, so Caleb shared his screen with me, so I'm going to pull up my presentation. All right, so, good evening. My name, again, is Elise Corey. I am the Senior Civil Engineer at the Department of Public Works, and first of all, thank you to the board for having me on tonight. I've been making this presentation to several other departments and boards across Auburn, and you're actually last on my list, so hopefully I've got this presentation down, and I can go through it pretty quickly for you. So, I'm going to be presenting today about our stormwater management program in town, and specifically, I'm going to be going over some changes to an existing stormwater bylaw that we have under our general bylaws, that is, where we have proposed changes that are going in front of the spring town meeting on May 4th. And the reason that we are making these changes is that there are new federal requirements that we need to follow, that are impacting the design standards to which stormwater treatment systems need to be designed. And we have a deadline to update our bylaw by June 30th, or we could potentially be facing some very serious enforcement actions from the Environmental Protection Agency. So to start at the beginning, and go over what's really driving these changes, we start with what stormwater actually is. And for the most part, it is rain, but it includes all types of precipitation, including snow, hail, sleet, anything of that nature. And we're concerned about it particularly in this regard because of the pollution that it can pick up as a result of running over the ground, and spread to many different water bodies once it gets discharged into the nearest stream, river, pond. So, this has led to a situation where there are lots of pollutants that are beginning to concentrate in our water bodies. And our old way of dealing with pollution and stormwater was to really try and get it out of the way as quickly as possible to kind of keep the flow going, and that's just not working anymore. So there's been a movement in recent years to turn towards a more natural, sustainable method of managing stormwater, and that's things like infiltration basins, rain gardens, anything that really takes stormwater at its source, and forces it to either infiltrate or treat the stormwater that comes into it. So, in support of this new sustainable movement, the town was issued what is called an MS-4 permit, and it is essentially a stormwater permit. And it is jointly administered by both the Environmental Protection Agency at the federal level, and also the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection at the state level. And although they say jointly administered, EPA is really the lead on this, and Mass. VP is just kind of along for the ride. So, we're not the only town in Massachusetts to have this, there are 260 other municipalities who have been issued this same permit, and they are the ones that have any sort of color on them on that map on the right. And this is based on population density from the 2010 census, so if you have above a certain level of population, you are given this permit. So, again, this is really what is driving the changes to our bylaw. And the topics in particular that we are concerned about are stormwater management during construction, what happens after construction to ensure that the stormwater infrastructure is being maintained appropriately, and also how the stormwater infrastructure treats phosphorus, which is considered to be a pollutant of concern in Auburn, due to the way that it causes excessive vegetation growth in some of our ponds. So, we have an existing stormwater bylaw, and it was put in place as a result of a previous iteration of the MS-4 permit, and it authorizes a land disturbance permit, as well as the creation of a stormwater committee, of which Caleb is a member, so he's well aware of what's going on. But the other committee members are shown on the right there, but they are primarily town department members, as well as Mike Garland from the Conservation Commission, who will be joining us as a member shortly. So the stormwater committee is authorized to enact a set of regulations under this bylaw, and that really gives the bylaw a lot of details, and gives us the authority to administer a land disturbance permit. So unfortunately, while we do have this bylaw in place, it was never actually enforced, really up until now, so the regulations were never developed, and the land disturbance permit was, and land disturbance permits were never issued. So, we have, we really have two reasons for changing this bylaw. One is the requirement to do so by the EPA under the MS-4 permit, but the other is that we really would like to enforce the land disturbance permit because it provides additional environmental protection that we think are necessary to drive the changes in water quality that we want to see. And so, as a result of that, we have developed a set of draft regulations, but unfortunately, right now, those regulations wouldn't really sink with the way that the bylaw is written, so we'd like to make changes in order for those two documents to be able to talk to each other effectively. So, the changes that are coming to the bylaw, if you do see them as part of the article that's been submitted, they do look extensive, but in general, they fall under these four general categories. So one is to really bring the bylaw up to the modern standards through which we administer and enforce stormwater standards. The bylaw was written a few years ago, so it's not quite up to how we would like to do it. The second is to remove any kind of confusing or duplicitous language that we've identified that could cause problems, both for the town to administer, and also for applicants of the stormwater permit, who are just trying to understand what they need to do. Third, is to remove any technical references or procedural languages from the bylaw into the regulations, and this is because we don't want to have to go to a town meeting every single time there's a change to stormwater standards. single time there's a change to stormwater standards or when we need to make small adjustments to procedures. And the fourth is to update the thresholds for when a land disturbance permit is needed. So Auburn is a member of a regional stormwater group who banded together and hired a consultant to do an audit of all the existing bylaws of its member communities. And they found that Auburn was actually one of the strictest. So we are going to change the thresholds to require less permits, which puts us in stuff with our neighboring communities without also compromising our water quality goals. So stormwater is a little tricky because it applies to a lot of different town departments and boards. So in addition to myself, working at the Department of Public Works, this is something that involves the Conservation Commission, it involves planning, and to a certain extent, it involves zoning. So we want to make sure that when an applicant comes and is applying to permits in all of these different areas, that we're coordinated in terms of what we're requiring from them, and also trying to ensure that we have good communication between what has already been submitted and ensuring that we don't have conflicting comments or anything that could cause confusion like that. So once this bylaw is put into place, the stormwater committee will meet to vote in regulations, and the Department of Public Works will be responsible for administering the land disturbance permit. And we're working right now on trying to figure out a way to make a permitting system that is as easy and seamless as possible so applicants can apply to it easily and get comments in a seamless manner. So in summary, we do have federal requirements for stormwater design that are more stringent than our existing regulations, and that's driving a change to our bylaw that will result in a new land disturbance permit. We do have to make these changes by June 30th, or we could face some enforcement actions, which can include serious financial fines from EPA. And permit administration, present land disturbance permit is going to be through the Department of Public Works, but we're gonna be working closely with everybody else in town who has anything to do with stormwater to try and make the process easier on everyone. So I'd be happy to take any questions or comments you have right now, but I've also included my contact information here in case you, in case you want to reach out separately with any other questions.
Okay, so thank you for that presentation. I'd like to go around the board, as we always do, and give each member an opportunity to speak. Vice Chair, Maron, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thanks for being here tonight. I really appreciate the information and really a thoughtful group of slides. I just had a couple of quick questions. Recognizing the push and the deadline, is this, I don't want to call it just administrative, but is the push and the deadline to change the bylaw, or are there any financial impacts to current stormwater remediation that the town is gonna have to undertake to meet these standards? So in other words, does DPW, do we need to take on any projects to upgrade any systems or stormwater activity in town? And what's the cost impact for the town for that?
Sure. So in regards to the bylaw, no, there will not be any financial implications for DPW. As part of the administration of the land disturbance permit, there will be a small nominal fee that applicants will have to submit as part of it. And that will kind of cover our internal costs for having staff review and enforce the permit. In terms of the MS4 permit as a whole, that's a much larger question. And unfortunately, I don't want to start throwing out numbers without having a more well-thought-out presentation without that backing me up. But yes, in the future, the regulations that are separate from the bylaw, that are separate from what the bylaw is doing, are gonna have financial implications on the town. And really, it's a work in progress to figure out what that exact number is going to be and how we're gonna address it.
Okay, so there are going to be future settlements that the town is gonna have to take on and assess what that financial impact is. The only follow-up question I have, if I may, is the, so understanding until the bylaw is changed, that's the new law moving forward for any future project. Are there any ongoing existing projects that this will impact? In other words, if anyone's in construction right now, are they gonna be immediately forced to comply?
So we have taken steps to enforce the existing bylaw as it currently stands. Unfortunately, it's very toothless. So while we are requiring people who are in the pre-construction phase, mostly in the design phase, to get this permit, the full regulations of what will really come out of this permit won't go into effect until after it has been voted in at Springtown meeting, it's been approved by the Attorney General, the regulations go in place. And then after that, any applicants who are in the, again, the design stage will have 60 days in order to comply with any new changes to the bylaw.
Thanks for taking my question. I really appreciate your thoughtful responses and being candid on what we have.
You're welcome.
Nothing further, but thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Maron. Mr. Cussie?
No questions, just a very nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Roach?
Nope, no questions, good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thanks.
Ms. Bush?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. So I have some questions. So as you know, the board here, the zoning board specifically, we are the stewards of our aquifers. And I would like to dig a little bit deeper into this because our aquifers and our water departments and our town responsibilities with highways and byways are varied in terms of how it impacts specifically our water, but also the Blackstone watershed as a whole. So I'm wondering, who is specifically required to apply for this permit, and how much is the fee, if you could, please?
Sure. So I'm just gonna go back to this slide right here.
Yeah, I didn't want to be.
Oh, can you see my screen?
I can, yeah.
Okay. So I didn't actually call it out during the presentation, but on this right-hand side over here are the actual thresholds for construction when a permit will be required.
Okay.
And the big one to look at really right here is this 5,000 square feet of land disturbance. And that's the minimum land disturbance that will be needed to get a permit. We are planning on doing something that's a minor and a major permit. So right now, we're thinking if it's greater than 5,000 but less than 10, you'll need a minor permit. And that's just gonna have basic controls in it. So things like ensuring that you have the proper settlement and erosion control set up and providing some level of stormwater treatment. And then if it's over 10,000 square feet, there'll be much more involved stormwater treatment and calculations that the applicant will have to perform. Something that an engineer is capable, like you would need to hire an engineer to do them. And it needs to show the level of pollutant removal that your stormwater system is going to do. And I think I've lost your original question. I'm sorry.
We did. So when you say land disturbance, now 5,000 square feet land disturbance could be a quarter acre of our house. 5,000 land square feet land disturbance could be, you know, digging a pad for a mall, you know, a small strip mall, let's say, for instance. So is this geared towards the medium-sized business in the area, or is this geared towards homeowner and up, would you say?
It would apply to homeowners and up. And I mean, 5,000 square feet for a single-family home is, it really depends. But the idea behind it for smaller developments is that developers would work to really try and maintain the existing land that's out there instead of just going out and clear-cutting the entire thing, which can have environmental benefits. So hopefully, these thresholds will encourage a lower level of land disturbance in the first place. And for the larger businesses and larger developments who would have more responsibility for ensuring good water quality will be pushed into doing more to ensure that that actually occurs.
Right. So I'm gonna bring the vice chair into this conversation. If you remember, Mr. Maron, when we sat on the zoning board review committee at its very early stages, we had presentations on this matter when they discussed the rain gardens and the different sizes of side streets. I'm trying to kind of jar your memory here. So is, along with this, has this been vetted by our local water department? Now, I know our water department is a completely separate entity from the town, I understand that, but our actions directly affect our water. So have they been brought into these conversations at some point?
So Ken Smith is a member of the stormwater committee. He's a non-voting member. He hasn't been to any of the recent meetings, but I know he is aware that this is occurring. We also worked very closely with them on a recent project that was funded through an MVP action grant from the state to look at the impact of chlorides as well as pollutants from vehicle spillovers that could potentially be going into Auburn's waters and its groundwater aquifers. So that's something that we definitely talked about in the past. I will say that as a stormwater designer myself, what we are pushing is beneficial not only to above groundwater, but to groundwater aquifers as well. In particular, I know that chlorides is a topic of concern that comes up in Auburn quite a bit. So the protections that are in this bylaw go towards protecting the aquifers through prevention of chlorides and also through treatment of things like phosphorus and nitrogen that the water department has to treat for before the drinking water is sent into the main system.
So I think you and I understand where we're going with this conversation is that, you know, and I appreciate that, obviously you're very well-versed on all of the different topics that I'm bringing up. So since you brought that up, we had mentioned the highways and byways here, I think this is an opportunity to publicly state, do we have any authority over the Mass Pike 290, 20, 146, all of these roads that traverse town, and as you mentioned, vehicle spill-off, road treatments that make it way into our water system? Does this bylaw or any other bylaw that you are aware of give us any enforcement over those circumstances?
No. This does not, and I'm not aware of any other through the town. We don't have any authority over the state like that. However, I will say that Mass DOT has its own MS4 permit. It's very cleverly called the TS4 permit for transportation. And they have what's called an individual permit. So Auburn is under a blanket permit. So, you know, EPA kind of created this standard thing and distributed it to 260 towns. The TS4 permit that Mass DOT has was specifically written for them by EPA. So it's much more stringent in some areas in terms of what they need to do. And it hasn't been issued yet, as far as I'm aware, but we are anticipating it any day. And I'm sure as part of that permit, they will have to be doing very similar things to what the town is doing to provide treatment and prevent things like spillovers from entering water bodies. But until that permit's issued, I can't provide any more details on what they will actually have to do.
Mm-hmm. So as a town, or even, and I know you can't speak on behalf of the water department, as a town, we really can't enforce because they're overlapping permits of different authority levels about the Mass Pike or one of the other roads for that matter, so not just the Pike, the state-numbered roads, having road treatments on them. Is that correct?
That's correct. Maybe the only other thing I will mention, that same MVP action grant that we worked with the water department on, Mass DOT was a contributing member to the workshops we held as part of it. So they were very cooperative during that, and they were very interested in what we have to say. So hopefully, something good will come out of the final report that was issued as part of that grant.
That's great. And I really appreciate you taking the time out to answer those questions for me and a lot of other people in town who do generally have concerns of the water. And some people have a better understanding of the whole, the layering of the onion, if you will, and better able to explain it than rather than getting it piecemeal. So thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. Any other members of the board have any other questions before I conclude this portion of the hearing or meeting, excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, at the risk of holding us a couple more minutes, I have a quick follow-up question. I'm wondering if there's any insight into the pervious, the impervious thresholds that we currently have, and if those will be adjusted by any of this work.
Is that in the subdivision rules and regulations?
I believe so. Caleb may be able to speak better to that. But I know we currently have thresholds and we've, I won't use the word struggled, but I, you know, as a kind of a guardian of the pervious versus impervious on larger projects and not wanting folks to, you know, pave everything and anything they can, we've got thresholds that need to be met for applications. And I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to increase those thresholds to our benefit in some of this work at some point.
Elise, those thresholds are part of the aquifer bylaw.
The aquifer bylaw? Okay. So I can't speak to that specifically because I'm not familiar enough with it to know all the details. But I will say that as part of the next year or so, we're gonna be taking a very close look at any bylaw, whether it's a zoning bylaw, a planning subdivision, really any sort of regulatory mechanism that the town has for stormwater, and really going through them with a fine-tooth comb to ensure that there's nothing in there that's contradicting each other and that everything is up to the latest standard. So just like speaking to the pervious versus impervious thing, the land disturbance permit regulations would consider anything from a gravel road to asphalt to be an existing impervious. And then any other additional impervious area that's added is going to require treatment to a higher level than is currently required at the state. So even if an applicant goes and has a design that meets the subdivision rules and regulations, unless it also meets the land disturbance permit, they will not be able to move forward. So they have to meet the most stringent of the regulations, just because they have to go in front of each of these individual permits. And then, like I said, we'll be working in the next year or so to really go through everything and make sure it all works together in the end.
Thanks for indulging that. I appreciate it.
No problem.
So I apologize because now I'm going to promise not to bring you down rabbit holes, but how does that affect solar farm projects?
That is.
We do have some extended permits, and then we did different changes because of the current situation, you know, and these permits, we've granted extensions on these permits recently. So can you touch on solar farms a little bit for us?
Yes, that is a very hot topic right now, actually, how solar farms are treated under stormwater management. So I will say it's something that we've been discussing, both internally in the town and also with our contacts in member communities throughout the state, because everybody is approaching it in a different way. And I think part of the problem is that no matter what's put in place, a lot of times, these larger solar companies, the ones that are doing the large projects, they're not very respectful of local stormwater regulations. And so they're willing to do things like break them and then just pay the resulting fine to the town and then just keep on going with what they're doing. So I think we're really looking for better case studies of successful ways that these types of projects are being controlled in regards to stormwater. But again, it's an ongoing issue. So I wish I had a better straightforward answer for you.
So would we take those, I guess, would you say on a case-by-case basis when they come up? Should we seek further guidance if we have to modify permits in the future?
Sure, if you'd like to. You know, Caleb has my information, my contact information's also in this slide. I'm always willing to weigh in on whatever stormwater issues I'm always willing to weigh in on whatever stormwater issues come up.
That's great. I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation, and your ability to respond to all these questions on the fly tell me that you've certainly done your homework and done into these topics, so I appreciate that. Very good work. Okay, so let's wrap. I think we have, I'm looking for my agenda here. I apologize. I have my, over the course of this meeting, I've shuffled my deck several times. So we have some meeting minutes to approve, I believe is next.
Through the chair, I can help if you'd like.
Go ahead.
So we have meeting minutes from August 20th, 2020. Need a motion?
So usually, I read them all off at once. Do you want me to read, you want to read them all off at once or just do one individual?
Sure. We have August 20th, 2020. We have September 17th, 2020, and we have October 15th, 2020.
So do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting as submitted, as read off by Caleb, because I cannot find my agenda?
Vice Chair Michael Marin, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, three sets, August 20th, 20, 9/17/20, and 10/15/20, as written.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Mr. Cussey, second.
Thank you. Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve the minutes as well.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
I approve.
Vice Chair Marin, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cussey, how do you vote?
Approve.
And the chair, Robert Tatro, I approve. Excellent. I believe that's all we have on our agenda. Our next meeting is the third Thursday in May, which would bring us to, I believe, May 20th. And we are still starting these meetings at 6 o'clock PM, and no COVID regulations have changed, so we'll be following the similar or same procedures as we did this evening. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Vice Chair Michael Marin, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Cussey, second.
Thank you. Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Approve motion to adjourn.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
I approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
Vice Chair Marin, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cussey, how do you vote?
Approve.
And the chair votes to approve. Thank you very much for everyone's help this evening, and we will see you next morning.